Looks like we are at our 9:10, consideration of update on COVID-19 or 6.3 item. We do have Dr. Pace here with us on Zoom and we are glad you're here with us to give us an update. Thank you very much for joining us, Dr. Pace, and the floor is yours.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Chair Crandall and the supervisors and the public. I'm Gary Pace, interim Public Health Officer for Lake County, and I really appreciate the opportunity to get a chance to update you on the response to the Omicron surge here now because the situation is really changing quickly and it's really great to get a chance to share what's going on in Lake County and what the response is here. So I do want to share you in welcoming Jonathan Portney because we're excited to have him here as our new Director of Health Services. And Sarah will be in a little later. She had a conflicting meeting this morning, so I'll do the slides, but she'll probably jump on in a little bit and can answer some questions or anything. So going to the slides. Thank you for putting those up, Matthew. And so go to the next slide, please. Nationwide and in California, we're having a huge spike right now. So I think the questions that we really need to ask about are, one, how protective will the vaccine be? Two, how bad will the hospitalization and death rate be? Three, how much of the running of society is going to be impacted by this surge as it rips through? Because schools and businesses are struggling now with staffing and with sick people. And so we're not really looking at shutting down businesses, doing these sort of lockdowns like we did last year, but businesses are still ending up closing on their own just because so many of their employees are getting sick. And probably most important, what's it going to look like in Lake County? We're really sometimes, you know, we've usually been about two to three weeks behind the rest of California when these waves move through. And sometimes the surges go by without even touching us much, and other times we get pretty heavily impacted, it's just later. But we are extremely vulnerable due to our small hospital capacity and transport issues are getting people out of the hospital. So this is the first slide here, and really it's showing Omicron. So along the bottom is the is time and the orange is the Delta the Delta variant, and then the purple is the Omicron variant. Now, this is not in Lake County. This is in our region, so California, Nevada, Arizona, this kind of general region. But you can see over the last couple of weeks, basically Omicron has is pretty much all the infection that we're seeing. In Lake County, we're not really, we haven't identified specifically any Omicron through genetic sequencing, but that's really a function of just not many samples being sent and it taking a few, a few weeks to really get those results. And I think by the activity of what's going on and what we're seeing, this is Omicron almost completely at this point in Lake County. And so Omicron does generally seem to be a milder disease and but it's it's incredibly contagious and the spread is just really remarkable what's going on with the spread. And we've not seen anything like it before with with the previous variants. And so one of the, one of the key messages, I think, is you can't really rely on your previous habits to keep you safe. So getting better masks, being more careful with social distancing, doing fewer gatherings is a is probably smart if you want to avoid getting it. And even though it is milder, if the hospitals get overwhelmed, we're going to be in in trouble. And we're also wondering how much society is going to be impacted because of the high spread. So we don't really know the answers to these things yet, and we're kind of trying to extrapolate from other places around the world and around the country. But it's, it's, there's a lot of worry. There's a lot of concern about what may be coming in the coming weeks because pretty much there's going to be a huge spread of infection. And then just how much that's going to impact everybody is just unclear at this point. The other point is that I personally agree with the person who was in the public commenting that previously vaccinated people can get it and spread it, although less so than unvaccinated people. And the severity does seem to be less, but just how much less, we're not 100% sure at this point. So next slide, please. So this shows the testing positivity in California, and it's a complicated slide. I know, I'm sorry about that. But it's a, it basically, I just want to give a quick feel for it. Again, this is the months along the bottom, and the the main line of interest to us is Rancho, which is the red line. And you can see we are lower than the rest of the state at the current time, but it's clearly rising dramatically. And we have a test positivity in Rancho, which is our region, Northern California, of 12% right now. Next slide, please. So this is the case rate in California. Again, the similar kind of thing. So we're Rancho again is the red line. So we're the lowest in the different regions around the state and but we're rising drastically now. And it's going from, so in California, it went from 15 cases per 100,000 to 132 over the last month. So it's pretty high and going still on the upswing now. So next slide, please. So this is looking at hospitalization and ICU rates. And this again is part of where we're getting really interested in what's what the impact is going to be. And I think the main thing to see is in California now and around the, I guess around the country, we have completely surpassed any previous hospitalization data. And in California, we're quickly approaching that. And in Sonoma County, they're getting hit fairly hard. In Lake County, we're, we are not there yet. So hopefully we will continue to be lucky with this. But and then the ICU rates are similar. They're moving up, but not nearly as fast as we've seen in previous hospitalizations. So that's probably because of the vaccination rate and possibly because of the lesser intensity of Omicron. One of the points that comes up a lot is that how much of these positive COVID patients in the hospitals are actually there because of COVID, or they're just in the hospital for other purposes. And then a COVID test is turning positive. You know, I think what in some of the, we don't have that locally, but in Southern California, in the Bay Area, it looks like it's probably between a quarter to a third of the hospitalized cases that are entering in this COVID positive data are there for other reasons. So probably two thirds or so are there because of because of COVID. And but again, they're all in the hospital. They're filling up the beds. We're starting to have trouble with hospital capacity in some parts of California. Next slide, please. So this is a hospitalizations by vaccine status in Lake County. And on the left side of this is since July 1. So this kind of unfortunately, we don't have many cases yet to get good data of Omicron. But you can see since July 1, 85% of the folks in Lake County who were in the hospital, COVID positive, were unvaccinated. 15% were fully vaccinated. So and that's kind of generally what we're seeing elsewhere. This other one on the right is really, it's from New York City, and I recognize that that's not really us. We're not in New York City. But it's, it's important to see the trends and so we can see how that may impact us. And so you can see along the bottom, Delta was up until the middle of December, and then Omicron started shooting it way up. And the unvaccinated are much, much higher than the vaccinated. And that seems to be what they're seeing worldwide and other places. So the unvaccinated folks seem to be the ones that are most vulnerable at getting really sick and getting in the hospital or dying. Go ahead, next slide, please. And this is another one. So this is a little bit of a conflicting information where, because again, a lot of the concern in our country is that the rates are going sky high in terms of cases and that they're, some of the modeling is showing that the hospital and death rates are going to go hot, pretty high. This is one, if you look at London, which has a similar demographic to the US, and this blue line is what it looked like during the winter last year in terms of ICU bed capacity. So when they were at about where we are now, we had a similar curve, and then it started shooting way up and going to a really high rate in in Great Britain, in London. And this black line here is what happened this year. So they started on the same line where we're about right now, and then the Omicron surge peaked, and then it started dropping down. So this is somewhat reassuring. Again, we don't really know what's going to happen here. This is kind of what happened in South Africa as well. So we're just trying to use this information to determine what lies ahead for us in the next month or two. And we're trying to plan for the worst, but hope for the best. Next slide, please. So this is, this is Lake County, and it's showing test positivity rate and a total test performed on the left. So you can see we're still showing quite a few tests. We're testing adequately. And then the test positivity rate is going way up here. So we're up over 20% test positivity rate, or well, it's 18.3% here, but it'll keep going up. So not a good sign. Next, like, next slide, please. So this is total confirmed cases, again, going kind of shooting up astronomically. This is Lake County. Next slide, please. So this is our Epi curve that we've been looking at over the couple of years now, and it's been a very illustrative of what's going on in the county. So you can see the two different spikes we've had. And now here we are at the far right. And actually, probably this, probably by next week, this red line is going to be all the way up to the very top of the graph. We have it like something like 200K. You can see what Sarah wrote here at the bottom. There's over 200 cases still being processed, and they're probably going to go be positive. So we'll probably be up higher than we've ever been before as of this week. So, you know, this is not something to ignore or minimize. Next slide, please. So this is recent cases by age group. You can see that the quick thing is, is that this is, so this is from December 12. So this is pretty much Omicron. And a huge, the highest number of cases are in this mid-range of 18 to 49, which are the people that are working a lot and have parents of kids and things like that. Let me just see, because Sarah had written something else for me here that that related to this, just some brand new information that she got together. So the, she actually, they were able to break down the five to 17-year-old age range last night, and I just got this this morning. And so the 12 to 17-year-olds are probably twice as high as the the five to 11-year-olds. So it seems like that middle school and high school age is a big part of what we're seeing. And the geographic distribution around the county is pretty much as you would expect by the population. So it's not localized in any one place. And the the other piece that they had is some of the racial identification. And it pretty much mirrors the the population distribution around the county. So I think what we're seeing now is the is real, just very, very widespread spread. And but it's definitely seems to be most prominent now in the in the working age, parental age of school age kids' numbers. Go ahead, next slide, please. So this is the hospitalization. And this is, again, we're, we're not being hit at this point with COVID. Our hospitals are full. They're always full. And but we're just seeing a couple hospitalized COVID patients in the locally. Next slide, please. So this is the vaccination question. The, so basically, of the cases from December 4, which is a little early, so we're going to be seeing some Delta cases there and some Omicron, 66% of the cases, so two thirds were not vaccinated. And so you can see four, unvaccinated folks are four times more likely to be a case than than the vaccinated people. And during Delta, that was more, this is now, it's basically Omicron is able to get through the defenses from the vaccine and at least have people be infected and contagious, but it seems like it's protecting them from the serious illness. And the, there's a question of previous, being previously infected, and how much that's, how protected that is against Omicron. I saw some data from, it was Europe or South Africa, that basically showed that being being vaccinated had something like an 80% protection rate there and being previously infected had something like a 20% protection rate. So it's not nearly as good as vaccination to have a previous infection from the little bit of information we have coming in. Next slide, please. So here's the vaccine status amongst eligible Lake County residents. So basically, again, we're, two thirds or so are pretty much completely vaccinated and about 36% of the fully vaccinated folks have received a booster. A booster does seem to make a sense of difference. It seems to give a fairly significant improvement in protection. Next slide, please. So this is vaccination status by age group. And I think the most interesting part of this is that even at the 65 plus, we still have 15,000 people that are unvaccinated. So those folks are incredibly vulnerable to getting quite sick. And, you know, just remember, we have basically, in normal time, we have eight ICU beds in the county, and we now have 16, or 15,000 plus people that are 60, over 65, who are not vaccinated. So very vulnerable. So anyhow, thank you. You can go ahead and go back. You can end the slides. So my, just I wanted to kind of just give a few conclusions out of this, and then I'm going to talk about the response that we have going in the county. And there's a lot going on, and just so that people know how to access services and get what they need. So vaccines do help, boosters help, and we really want to encourage people to get vaccinated and boosted. These, again, these are the conclusions from the slide that I'm doing. Will, will the vaccine continue to keep people out of the hospital and keep them from dying? We, we think so, but we're not positive yet just how good that protection's going to be. And that's kind of what we're waiting to to see here. And the sheer number of cases may still fill up the hospitals and make staffing very difficult for businesses and schools, etc. We have an awful lot of people in Lake County that are not vaccinated. We, do we have enough people vaccinated in the county to keep the hospitals from getting overwhelmed? You know, that's from the public health point of view is one of the big questions. We've been really pushing vaccine. A lot of people feel like it's their individual right to to protect themselves in whatever way they see possible. But there is a community responsibility, because if you get sick and be in the hospital, it's going to be a problem. And again, will the schools and businesses be able to stay open? So these are, these are kind of the the questions and the concerns with this huge surge coming into the county and how to do it. So what are we doing about it? What's going on in the county to try to help us not get in trouble and be protected? I think, you know, the first part is protections. You know, masking is clearly helpful. Regular masks, the cloth mask and the surgical mask are probably not as good during Omicron as they were during Delta and before. I personally am wearing an N95 whenever I'm in public or whenever I'm working, seeing patients and things like that. I really want to encourage people to use N95s as much as possible. The, if the cloth mask worked for you before, that's great, but it's probably not as good now as it was before. And N95 is probably the right way to go, if at all possible. The, you really need to stay at home if you're sick or positive. You know, the testing, people are getting tested a lot more now, and it's good. But if you're positive, you need to stay home and not go out to the store, not go to events. You know, the isolation and quarantine regulations have changed a lot. It's very confusing. I understand that. And we are following the CDPH, the California Department of Public Health Regulations, and those are the guidelines, and those are a little stricter than the CDC ones. They require testing at the end of the five days of quarantine and isolation. I think if you can, people should isolate for 10 days if they can, or quarantine. But we're trying to walk this balance between allowing places to stay open and not having to shut down because they don't have enough people to to staff. If you have questions about that, you can call the COVID Warm Line or go online, and this California Department of Public Health Guidelines are there. You know, we're expecting the businesses and the schools to follow the guidelines, and public should let businesses know that you support them, following them. I think the businesses, a lot of them want to do the right thing, but if they get a lot of criticism, it becomes hard to to hold to that. And I think, you know, support the businesses that are really trying to keep the public safe. Sonoma County, just as of last night, they came out with an announcement that they're shutting down large gatherings, and they're pretty much telling everybody to stay home as much as you can for the next couple of weeks. I don't anticipate us going that route, but this is, you know, it's important to see that this is, this is the level of concern that we're seeing in the, in the area. And, you know, Sonoma County is where an awful lot of our patients go when they need to be hospitalized. So it's, you know, they're, they're kind of raising the red flag right now. And so that's just really the kind of precautionary, the protection things. So the other parts of our response are, the first one is contact tracing. So we do have a bunch of state resources helping us to try to trace down contacts when we get positive cases. It's very, with this many cases, you know, hundreds of cases, it's almost impossible to keep up with that. We're trying to focus on the schools and the nursing homes and the other congregate living situations that are very vulnerable. One of the nursing homes has an outbreak now. The other, at least one of the other ones has a couple staff positive. So, you know, this is just, it's everywhere. And these folks are very vulnerable, and they're in a closed environment. The jails and homeless shelters are, I think they're doing okay at this point, but it's a, you know, it's an area of real concern. So testing is the third segment, and this is a, a lot's been changing around this, and a lot of the rules are changing. One of the, and a lot of the resources are changing. But there's two tests, the antigen test, which is the rapid test, and the PCR test, which is what we've been using a lot in the past. I think the antigen test is very good, very helpful for determining if somebody's actively contagious. And so we're using it a lot to help people see if they can come off of isolation, quarantine, or if kids are going to school, they get tested, and if they're positive on the antigen test, they need to go home because they're contagious. And so the PCR is the one that gets sent out, takes a day or two to come back, harder to get, more sensitive, so it picks it up sometimes even when people are no longer contagious. So one of the big goals with our testing, and we're trying to get the information out now about where to get tests and how to do testing, is to keep the emergency rooms open. People should not go to the emergency room just to get a test, because they are struggling to keep up. And and we really want to redirect people away from going to the emergency department to get testing and to go find other ways to do it. We do, on our website, we just put out a press release last week, and on our website, we have some information about how to find tests and testing. And we're putting together, Raine's putting together a one-page document that's going to have all this so that the emergency rooms and the schools and everybody can print it out and have it available for people that have questions or direct people to the website. There are, the schools have some antigen testing, so kids can almost always get tested if they're symptomatic or if there's some concern before having them come into the school. So they have the antigen test there. There's some, we have a testing van that's going around the county that's doing PCR testing. So you can go on the website and find where it is at different days of the week. Unfortunately, the nurses there are sick and are out sick, and so it was closed yesterday. It'll be closed again today, and hopefully it'll be back up tomorrow. But, you know, this is one of the examples of what's happening. We have the resource now, but we don't have the staffing because of the, because of people getting sick. Providers have both the PCR and the antigen testing available, so you can talk to your medical provider. The vaccine sites will be handing out antigen tests. We have some antigen tests that are coming in from the state, and we can give those out to people. So if you can find a vaccine site, that's one of the public sites, we, we're trying to give out antigen tests there. And some of the, some community groups have been really hard at work at trying to get testing going. And so we've been distributing tests out to the, some of the community groups, churches, food banks, things like that. And if you're, you have a community group, or if you're a member of a community group that would like to get some testing, to distribute to their people or to serve as a hub for some of their community, we're happy to do that. So please contact us through the COVID Warm Line. We have two different kinds of antigen tests. One is a big box with 40 tests in it that only has one bottle every agent. So somebody has to sort of serve as a hub, but somebody in a neighborhood could serve as a hub, or the food bank, or a church, or something like that. So we really are interested in getting the tests out in the community as much as we can, so that people can see when they're contagious and stay home. So that's enough about testing. So vaccines are another piece of this. You know, getting vaccinated now is a good thing. It's probably not going to change the course of the Omicron at this point, but we really want to encourage people to do it, and we're doing everything we can to keep vaccines available. Our new Director of Nursing, Eileen, has been really hard at work at trying to get a vaccine van into the county, and it's going to, this is a state resource, and so we're going to get them to come back in here in about two weeks. And so you can keep an eye on that. So that's going to be going around the county and providing vaccines for people, boosters and first shots. The pharmacies are continuing to do it. We, there are some vaccine sites around the community through some of the community organizations that have been at work. And so all these things, if you go on the website, you can find some of that out. Certain medical providers are providing vaccine as well. So again, if you want to get a shot, it can be a little hard to do sometimes to navigate where it is. But if you go on our website, that's a good first start. So treatment is another piece of the response now, and there, you read a lot about it in the newspaper, but there's just simply not very much available. The main one that's going to be most useful, I think, is called Paxlovid. It's a pill, and it's for high-risk people that are infected but early in the course. We are supposed to get 20 courses of this from the state. We were supposed to get it beginning of last week, and it still hasn't come in yet. And then they're going to have a weekly supply that's supposedly going to expand in the coming weeks. We haven't seen a drop of it yet, and we'll see when we do. Northlake Pharmacy has been a really great partner, and they've been willing to do this with us and and stock it. And so, you know, if you talk to your doctor and they feel like you're appropriate, once we get it in, that's where it's going to be starting off. We Think Right Aid is also interested in in being part of this. And so, but we're also trying to get other pharmacies to participate. So if you go and ask your pharmacy if they would participate, we'd appreciate it because we want to get them on board with this as well. Monoclonal antibodies is another treatment option. There's very little of it in the county. We're having, you know, it comes in through the state again, because there's just a limited supplier around the country. And the hospitals are ready to get that. So that's something that you feel like you're a candidate for. Talk to your provider, and the hospitals are are trying to have some of that around, but it's very hard to get a hold of that as well. So the last part of our response really is the surge. And this is, you know, I feel like this is about the third time I've been up here talking about the surge coming in. Over the last two years, we've been really dealing with these concerning waves coming in and what what it looks like and how limited our capacity is in the county. The hospitals are monitoring it. So far, we're doing really good. And but we recognize that in Lake County, there's often a three-week delay from the uptick in cases to actually getting the, getting, seeing the hospitals be impacted. And but, and staffing is just a gigantic issue with that. It's, you know, the hospital staff gets sick, and they just don't have much capacity. And, you know, there's a hardworking team of clinical people in the county, but there's just not a whole lot of folks that are not working at full tilt already. Transport is a problem as well with people that need to go to a regional hospital or worse, for specialty care. We just always have trouble with that, especially this time of year when the weather doesn't allow the helicopters to come in sometimes. And, you know, there's also this whole issue of delaying of diagnosis and treatment for other causes. If the ER is filled up, and the hospital beds are filled up with people that are COVID, and somebody has a heart attack or a stroke, they may get a delay in care, which can be devastating and, you know, really sad when that happens. So we're just encouraging people to stay out of the ER if they don't need it. If you're sick and you need to go, go. But if you're, don't go just for a test or just for minor things that you can go wait till tomorrow and go to your regular doctor for. So again, if you have any questions about all this, I know this is a lot of information, but we do have the COVID Warm Lines open during business hours, and our website has a lot of information, and people are working hard to try to keep that up to date. So the last little part I want to just talk about is kind of thinking about the long term. We're expecting a couple more weeks of surge, and maybe it's going to be a bit longer for us here in Lake County, but, you know, something like that. And the hospitalization and death rate, we just don't know, but usually that lags about three more weeks after that. So, you know, we're probably looking at like six weeks where we really have to be on edge. And then hopefully after that, hopefully by, you know, at the end of February, we're going to be looking a lot better. The question here, I think, is really how to balance, how to live your life with this surge of like, should you go traveling? Should you have people over for dinner? Should you, you know, have your kids play sports? All those, and I think that's something people have to make on an individual basis. But I think as much as you can, it's a good time to lay as low as possible for the next four to six weeks, especially if you're somebody with underlying health conditions or you're not vaccinated. I think that's a, you should really try to postpone things if you can. The hospitals may get overwhelmed in the coming weeks, and this affects everyone, not just the people with COVID. And there are multiple reports that the death rates and the public impact on COVID have been significantly reduced over the duration of the pandemic. have been significantly reduced over the duration of the pandemic because of some of the measures to limit spread. So what I'm trying to say there is that, you know, there's a lot of interest in looking back now and seeing how much, how useful these things were of the shutting down the economy for a while, keeping the kids out of school, getting the vac, pushing these vaccinations, and it seems like that it has helped quite a bit, and we actually have avoided a lot more death and misery than we would have had if they, we hadn't done that. It's really hard to sort through all this, but that's kind of the current thinking. So, you know, and I think eventually we're, we're moving towards a longer-term approach to living with the virus more like we do with the flu. It's still a little too early to make this shift yet, we just don't know enough about what's gonna happen with the hospitals with this Omicron variant, how well-protected the vaccinated people are, but that's really the big question here is, how do we shift into kind of recognizing that COVID is just gonna be part of regular life and that we may have flares of it, but we have to kind of work with it, and we're still, I think the jury's still out on that, we're still waiting to get that information. So I think that's everything from me now, thank you, and appreciate the chance to talk about this.
Thank you for your update, Dr. Pace, we appreciate you giving us that information. Is there any questions from the board, and I think we have Supervisor Pyska?
Good morning, Dr. Pace, thanks for your update. I think you're right, I think we're gonna learn a lot in the next few weeks, and I, I think we just have to recognize that and be able to continue to adapt and adjust with the data that comes to us and what we learn. I have a question about the boosters for the 12, 12 and up. Do you know where those would be available, so we can share that with the public? I'm having a hard time making that appointment with my turn, and I'm just wondering if either you or Jonathan or, or Jennifer has any more information on how to get that out to families?
I'm not sure, so I don't know if Eileen does or Jennifer.
Can I jump in? This is Eileen, thank you. I just received notice that in my turn, folks are able to register for sites that are giving shots to the 12 plus or the 5 to 11 immunocompromised for their boosters. And so, again, if we could just direct people to our website, that site is updated every couple of times per week at minimum, and so people will be able to quickly see where they can go for, for what age range and what types of shot, and if appointments required or walk-ins are attempted.
Okay, I, thank you, Eileen, for that, but I'm not able to make my appointment for my daughter in my turn, so maybe we can talk offline about that.
Is there any other questions? Supervisor Sabatier?
It's not a question, it's more of a comment. I, I just wanted to publicly thank Northlake Port Pharmacy, or maybe it's Northlake Pharmacy, not sure if I got the name right or wrong. They're the only ones right now doing open-door drop-in vaccinations, and I have gone by to check that out, and it is swamped with a bunch of people looking to get vaccinations. So I think that the appointments are great, but I think that it's not enough, and I know I've had discussions over at Adventist Health, I'm checking in to see if that's changed this week. I was told that would be possible, I haven't gotten a response quite yet, but if we can get more of our pharmacies or more of our local clinics to do those drop-ins, it doesn't have to be every single day, if it could be at least one day a week all around the lake, but just to have that available in Northlake Port only, or in Lakeport only, kind of takes away from the access from a large portion of our community throughout Lake County. So I was pleased that there seemed to have been some movement, at least with Adventist Health down south, and hopefully that they do open up the door, and I actually just got a yes to my response, so that seems to be the case. But if we can look to get more, and I'm looking at our supervisors, not necessarily our public health, we have connections with those healthcare professionals, we have connections with our pharmacies, we can have those same conversations rather than asking public health to take away from what it is that they're doing, so that we can try to open up some more doors. I, I think that oftentimes it makes sense for appointments, but when we have people who are living in the now, and, and it's really difficult to make an appointment and stick with that appointment, but if you have a thought today, I want to get a shot, and you can't, because you don't have transportation or access to come all the way up to Lakeport, then that's, that's, to me, that's, that's a lost potential of somebody getting the protection that they want to get. And so that was my goal last week, was to try to open up some of those doors, and just looking at all of you to see if we can all have that same effort, to try to make it as accessible as possible. So just wanted to say thank you to Northlake Port Pharmacy, just because I know that they're doing a whole lot, and I'm sure that it's tiring, and, and with staff shortages everywhere, I'm sure they're just as burdened by that symptom of COVID-19 as everyone else is too, so wanted to make that public appreciation.
Thank you for that, Supervisor Sabatier. I, I'll add to that, you're talking about Northlake Pharmacy here in, in Lakeport, my, my son finally decided to get the Pfizer Vaccination 16 and Over, and I was very impressed with the amount of people that were there and, and how they were handling it. We tried to go to different spots, and the only place available was that pharmacy, and we got in, luckily, we got in like at 11, but after that, it was just people piling in to get it done. And so that's what I did want to ask Dr. Pace, was if, if anyone in the staff knew, if some of those last week vaccinations are counted towards the amount of people, because like I said, I, I've heard and seen a lot of people talking about getting those vaccinations or initiating those vaccinations.
You know, I'm not sure if those are part of that, I think it's, Sarah, you're on now, do you know whether, where the cutoff was on in terms of the addition of the new vaccine data?
The data that we showed earlier today, or this morning?
Yeah, yeah.
That is among eligible, all vaccines is among eligible residents, and then in terms of the booster data that we showed earlier today, that is just among adults. There's been very few non-adults who've received the booster in Lake County.
Right, but I think his question was, did, was the data reflective of vaccinations that have been given within the last seven days?
Yes, as I ran it two days ago.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, that helps. And then I, just real quick, before I move on to Supervisor Sabatier, I had a question about, you mentioned something about treatment, like treatment pills, was that, was I, did I hear that wrong, or is that, is that the same as the monoclonal antidotes or antibodies that they're talking about, or?
Right, so there's basically two different treatment options. One is monoclonal antibodies, which is given IV, and needs to be given in a kind of an IV setting, either a hospital or, or infusion center or something like that, and those are, most of those are not working well against Omicron, so they're kind of moving into disfavor, although there are certain situations where they can be helpful, we have very little of that in the community. There's another treatment that you've been hearing about in the news about some antiviral pills that will actually prevent the illness from getting more severe, so when somebody tests positive and they're high risk to getting very sick, then we use these pills and it cuts it by 80% or something like that from needing to be, 80% of the time, it, it will, it will improve the, the risk of getting infected, of having to go in the hospital. The problem is, is, so these are the pills you hear about that the Biden administration was trying to push out and trying to order hundreds of thousands of them, but they're very limited supply right now, and so the state gets a certain amount, and then they divide them up by each county gets their, their share, and ours is 20 courses, and we were supposed to get them a couple weeks ago, but there, it's been delayed, I think, because of the weather and different things. So we're gonna have very little capacity, and again, Northlake Pharmacy has been our most reliable partner in working with us on this in terms of being willing to, to stock it and, and let the doctors prescribe it and then dispensing it. So another shout out to the, to the same folks for doing that. Yeah, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you so much. Supervisor Sabatier?
I had a question a minute ago. Oh, yes, just wanted to check in, the, as far as data coming from the hospitals, I know in the past, it's been kind of a, a roller coaster where sometimes it's readily available and, and provided, is there a open line of communication where you're able to obtain all of the data from the hospitals for vaccinated, unvaccinated numbers of people in ICU and hospitalization? Is that all made available directly to you, or are you only getting that through the state website?
My understanding is things are pretty good right now, but I don't know if Sarah or Eileen want to answer that.
I can provide some insight on a couple streams of data, so weekly, we provide, we receive a line list of hospitalized patients in and out of Lake County from the California Department of Public Health, that does not come direct from the two local hospitals, but rather from CDPH, and then there's another reporting stream through CDPH as well, but I can't speak to any local reporting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any other questions, or? Okay, we'll move on to Supervisor Simon.
Thank you for all the information. As we said always, getting as much information out in the public during these trying times is, is very important. I think you touched on a little bit, the testing capabilities in Lake County, we need to just continue to, to push on those, that's a, a big part of supporting our businesses. As you said, the Omicron, you know, Omicron variant is, it's coming, and I still believe that we are, Dr. Pace, like you said, four to six weeks behind the surrounding areas, I don't know what's going on. But really working on those testing capabilities, most folks, and I think I've heard it, I haven't heard that come from you or your office, but this one is very transmissible, most folks, vaccinated or unvaccinated, will probably get this, but we've got to keep our workforce. Our workforce has not recovered since the first pandemic, being a business owner in the county, and you've seen it around the county. So having those testing capabilities while people are isolating to do the right thing for the community are really important, so we can get the workforce going, continue the businesses to continue to try and thrive and recover here in Lake County, very important. I do also want to say, I appreciate as a business owner in South County, Walmart has been very open to come out, we have, as a Middletown Rancheria and Twin Pine Casino, we've used them multiple times to come out and get flu shots, Walmart vaccination, here to me, I don't know what's going on, Sam, vaccinations?
The mic is pointed away from you, it's gotta be directly in your face.
It has to be directly in your face.
Like this?
Yeah. This needs to be directly, as soon as it's, just for showing.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. And you, so I just, you know, I know there are a lot of different agencies that are looking to do things, I think there's some new testing sites also that are popping up throughout the county, I don't know all the names, but I do know there's a, a new one in South County, set up out in Hidden Valley that's doing things. So just communication with the local, the local folks and business owners that are doing stuff. So today, I think that Walmart is our, our facility, doing testing and vaccinations, I think from 11 to 3, it's open to the public, I think from 12 to 3. So I just want to make sure that we're continuing to support all the agencies out there, you know, in, in this process, so that'd be great. I would also request Chair, that you reach out to tribal health, it'd be great during these next four to six weeks that we have tribal health also here, because still, there's a, a non-reporting, there's, the state and tribal health aren't talking to each other. Those numbers that are being treated by there, it doesn't make any sense, we've had multiple meetings, but people vaccinated and tested in our community are very important, so Chair, I would request if you need any assistance, you know, I can help you with that too, but having our tribal health representative, Ernesto, here to just give updates, I think is very important, as Supervisor Pyska, knowing numbers, there are a lot of folks that are testing at home, and we don't get that data, so I think any information we can bring to the table here is greatly needed. So that's really all I have today, and I want to thank everybody that's on the screen up there and everyone working on this issue. As we move through these next six weeks, yes, it may be trying, but we know a lot more than we did when this started in 2019, 2020, and I know we're gonna attempt to do the best that we can as we move forward, and, you know, we're gonna be okay, that's all I know, so thank you very much.
Supervisor Pyska?
I, I have a question about the wastewater facilities and when those testing, or when those tests are gonna come back, or, or have, have those samples been taken already?
Eileen, do you want to share on that? Eileen's working really hard on this one.
Sure, yeah, so we're working with CDPH, and they have act, just put us on the schedule to begin testing our Clear Lake facility, that's our biggest facility with the most populous area, and that will start at the end of this month, and so there will be testing three days a week on the sewage, and then we'll be getting data coming in, in early February.
Okay, so we're looking at two weeks from now, probably?
Right around there, yeah, two, two plus weeks, yep.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome, and we're looking to expand, we're on their list, we're also on CBC's list, to see if they can expand to other wastewater plants in the county.
Great.
Okay, and I will reach out to Ernesto in, in lieu of the next COVID update to ensure, because I know that there are many citizens in Lake County that go to tribal health, native and non-native, that get testing and vaccinations, so make sure we include that. Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I appreciate the comment made by Supervisor Simon, I just don't understand how our VA and our tribal health cannot communicate with systems, with the state, it just doesn't make any sense to me, I don't understand what's going on, it's been two years, and it feels like they just don't want to resolve it, they want to have those numbers being unique and separated, and our communities are not separated, our communities are one, and we all, we're all intermingling, and so it's just, it's, it's crazy.
It is. Seeing no other pans up, I'll go ahead and bring it to public input. And unless Director Portnoy, did you have anything to add to this, sir?
I do not at this time, I'm listening and looking forward to a public comment and continuing to gain insight from the professionals here in the room, thank you for asking.
You're welcome, and sorry for putting you on the spot, I just wanted to, I just seen you there. All right, so it looks like we have a public input in the chambers, and so if you can come up, you have three minutes to state your, to state your question and concern, please state your name for the record.
My name is Joan Wass, I want to know, Dr. Pace, if you are the official public health officer. I see you on the closed session items of the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to congratulate you if you are, but are you the official public health officer? And second, I receive your press releases, I appreciate them, I am a journalist, I want to know, you said that, that the vaccines are still not 100% effective in avoiding COVID-19 or Omicron, I want to know how effective the vaccines can be, thank you. And, and the people who don't have vaccines compared to the people who do have vaccines, thank you.
Joan, I think he is the, he's the interim, so your first question, Dr. Pace, I don't know if you wanted to answer, if you had a answer for that question?
Sure, I can, yeah, I'm the interim public health officer, I left the position, you know, last April, and the department is, and the county is recruiting, and so in the meantime, I'm helping with some other people to kind of fill the role, so I, I, I am the official health officer, but, you know, it's very limited what I have to offer right now, and that, the county's actively recruiting. The answer to your second question, I, I mean, the vaccine, the vaccine was never 100% effective, but it was, it did a really good job before, with Omicron, it's less so, it seems to be able to protect pretty well against hospitalization and severe illness, but not against getting infected and being contagious, so right now, I showed that data earlier, but there's something- So right now, I showed that data earlier, but there's something like if somebody is in contact with somebody with, with COVID, your chances of getting infected, if you're vaccinated, is about a quarter of what it is if you're unvaccinated. So if you're unvaccinated, your chances are four times of leaving with an infection than if you were vaccinated. For severe disease and death, it's more like 15 to one. So the vaccine is really good and, but it's not 100% protective.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. I don't see anyone else in the chambers that has a public comment, so we'll move on to the Zoom hands that are up. And I just wanted to start with Jeremy Rarick. If you are one of the call-in numbers, I would like to start with you since you were the, you were earlier trying to give your input during regular public input.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to, after hearing what Gary had to say, I kind of wanted to tell a little bit about what recently happened to me at Adventist Hospital here in Lake County. On November 28th, I went in with chest pains, tightness of my chest. I mean, I was really having a cardiac event. The nurse there, she, she started to make jokes about why I wasn't vaccinated. She went on to say that, you know, are you afraid of microchips? Are you, are you this, that? It ended up being a pulmonary embolism and they let me walk out of there, but the only thing they seemed concerned about was, was I vaccinated or not? You know, it almost killed me. So I, I think we have to look at what, how, what we say and how our public health policy affects the actual workers in these hospitals. You know, when we, when we demonize the unvaccinated and we say that the unvaccinated, you know, are the dirty grimy people, you know, and that's, that's how people feel. They're the ones that are going to get everybody sick, the plague rats. Well, just a few months ago, I said the exact same thing that Gary Pace said today. And Simon, our Supervisor Moak, said I was a conspiracy theorist, that I, you know, I did, everything I was saying was just made up mumbo jumbo. And it was the exact same thing that Gary Pace said today, that you can still transmit and catch COVID whether you're vaccinated or not. Now, wouldn't it be more dangerous if for a unvaccinated, or for a vaccinated person who doesn't know they have the disease, but can still spread it or transmit it, to be walking around, they don't even know that they're sick? You know, where the unvaccinated people, if they get a little cold or whatever, I mean, many scientists have already said that Omicron presents a common cold. I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not a life or death, I mean, really, I mean, how many people might have died recently in Lake County out of 60,000 people here? So I, I just want to look at this for what it is. I mean, you just heard Moak a minute ago, he acted like a meteor was going to hit the earth. How will we get through the next six weeks? You know, it, it, there has to be a stop at some point where we just learn to live with this thing and take care of ourselves. We should worry about taking care of ourselves, eating healthy, losing weight and boosting our immune system. Yep, and it's going to be a many, many, many more mutations after this one. And every time.
It looks like your time is up, so if you could wrap up your comment?
Okay, yeah, I just don't think we should start shutdowns or closing places or doing all this stuff all over again because it's going to happen over and over and over. Hey, take care.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Carlos Bono.
Good morning. Before I begin, I'd like to invite all Lake County residents against medical mandates to sign a petition against medical tyranny at StandUpLakeCounty.org. Now I would like to address the inefficacy and danger of these emergency use.
Did you state your name?
... inoculations, which has been proven that they do not prevent transmission of infection.
Sir, can you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Carlos Bono? Both part of the definition of a vaccine before the pharmaceutical industry conveniently had the definition changed. According to the new definition, any treatment that mitigates the effects of a virus can be considered a vaccine. So hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin could be considered vaccines under the new definition. After over 1 million, hello?
Yes, we hear you. Keep going.
Okay, after over 1 million adverse events and more than 20,000 deaths related to COVID-19 vaccines, quote unquote, according to the CDC, there's no question of the danger these jabs represent, especially to younger people that are at less risk of the virus. According to Nobel laureate, Nobel laureate Luke Montagnier, who stated in the Wall Street Journal that the jab mandates are, quote, irrational and contrary to the public interest for government to mandate vaccines absent any evidence that the vaccines are effective in stopping the spread of the pathogen. This so-called medical emergency has been ongoing for almost two years and the CDC itself admitted that 75% of all reported CV deaths were in people with at least four comorbidities. This means that the CDC and the medical pharmaceutical industry colluded to inflate the numbers of dead in order to push unconstitutional and illegal measures on the population with the purpose of taking away our God-given freedoms. Also, the medical profession in hospitals receives considerable incentives in treating cases and reporting deaths attributed to COVID-19. This constitutes one of the, if not the biggest crimes against humanity since World War II. I have urged and continue to urge the Lake County Board of Supervisors to stop promoting these experimental jabs and get on the right side of history. The number of cases has skyrocketed over the past month, but most cases are mild due to the current Omicron variant and many of these cases are in fully vaccinated and boosted individuals, two of which I know personally. This milder virus could provide herd immunity and negates the need for these dangerous vaccines and boosters. Also, early treatment with several cheap pharmaceutical drugs has proven effective in completely eradicating the virus as we have seen in the Uttar Pradesh province of India, where the use of ivermectin was seen to completely stop COVID and now has no cases. To continue to promote and mandate vaccinations, masks and other illegal and unconstitutional measures constitutes a crime against humanity and the Board of Supervisors has the obligation to stop the crime in the name of their constituents. I'd like to add that these, these vaccines don't work. They're not really vaccines. They, they changed the definition of vaccine.
If you can get to the end of your statement, your three minutes is up.
Okay, yeah, I'd just like to, again, I'd like to urge all the residents of Lake County to go to StandUpLakeCounty.org and sign our petition, which we will be presenting before this Board of Supervisors as soon as we hit 1,000 signatures. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have phone 4627. If you could please state your name for the record as well, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, this is Tom Slate. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you. If you could speak further, closer into your microphone would help though.
Okay, let me know.
There we go, we're great.
Yep, everyone. I just had a few thoughts and this is my perspective. It's as if the supervisor meeting is a courtroom, but we get the one official side and then a few of us have to call in with at least other information. And we've called, a lot of us have called in numerous times. We have early treatments, ivermectin, HCQ, that apparently, apparently do work, and a PCR test that apparently doesn't work. So there's a lot of background information, but I would, it has occurred to me and maybe everyone that we don't need to worry about terrorism anymore. Not a problem anymore. We all need to be afraid of a silent killer that's ripping through the county. So what is the actual reality? Well, I don't know, but this absolutely looks like fear mongering to me. And what I have noticed is, oh, as far as supporting local businesses, I won't mention one, but there's a local business that I used to support, but they demand masks before I even walked in the door. So from now on, that product I will be buying from Amazon. I will not be supporting that business anymore and they can do what they want. But what I am noticing, so many people are not wearing masks. I, I'm not a mind reader. I think they no longer believe it. It's not COVID fatigue. People are beginning to realize how many endless surges are going to rip through Lake County again and again and again. And I think our health, Mr. Pace or Dr. Pace, had something about lockdowns and others seem to be working. Well, it would seem to me if we have another surge ripping through Lake County, that is highly doubtful. So again, getting back to this, a lot of people are not wearing masks and I think because they simply don't believe it, because in my opinion, it is not, no longer believable. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Slate. And I don't think he said that they were doing lockdowns in Sonoma. I think he was saying that they were recommending, it was, it was more of a recommendation to do so. Yeah, to stay home. So next, we have phone 6205. If you could state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Good morning, this is Bart Levinson. Can you hear me?
Yes, very clearly.
Thank you very much. I tried to call the health department and spoke with them last Friday to get some updated information. I wanted to know what the schedule would be of availability of our COVID updates for Lake County and they were not able to tell me. I also asked about something that I heard in Mendocino County that they had and were distributing 14,000 free tests and I was told that they were not available in Lake County. So I'm wondering if the information could be updated more timely and more fully with our local health department, please, and to make sure that we have access to the information online so that we as citizens can keep track of the actual situation. Sorry, I just blanked on, the other thing that I was going to address was from the previous caller. Sorry, I've, I've lost it.
Oh, no, it's okay.
So that was what I wanted to speak to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Levinson. Next, we have phone 1113. If you could state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Yes, hi, this is Dr. Will Tuttle calling. I'd like to address this pandemic response by the Lake County officials, you guys. And again, I really am very concerned about this. Irrefutably, we can see that science is showing that the COVID-19 vaccine is not safe, it's not effective in limiting transmission, it's not effective in limiting infections from this coronavirus. And this is false propaganda, really. The whole narrative is falling apart. It's put out by public officials who are now continuing to push this vaccine and it's a clear breach of duty. Public office holders are subject to and aware of a duty to prevent death or serious injury that arises by virtue of the function of the public office you're in. And I think many of you are breaching that duty and recklessly causing a risk of death or serious injury by carrying on regardless of how the now confirmed dangers associated with the injection for COVID-19. Some of these risks are blood clotting, myocarditis, pericarditis, thrombosis, thrombocytopenia, anaphylaxis, Bell's palsy, Guillain-Barre syndrome, cancer, many, 20,000 people have died already. These are very extremely concerning numbers in the United States. We got close to a million people who are harmed by these vaccines. This doesn't seem to be discussed. And I think we have to realize that the survival rate for this 99.7%, as we heard earlier from people with multiple already pre-existing conditions. And also we have a case demic and the PCR test now we're in January, which was used for almost two years to scare everybody into being terrified of this thing. And now we say that COVID test is no good, the CDC says, actually, it was a bunch of false positives. So now we have other tests, right? How do we know those aren't false positives? And, and, and something that's very important to understand is that some of these tests, like the Intelswab COVID-19 rapid test, which is approved by the FDA, and they have in their information, they say, quote, potential cross reactivity of this test with COVID-19 vaccines has not been evaluated. They haven't even evaluated whether getting vaccinated will cause you to get a false positive. So for example, if someone takes the COVID vaccine, so now he can go back to work at his office, but then the boss wants all the employees to keep getting the test, get tested. So three weeks, three weeks later, he gets tested and because the test cross reacts with the vaccine, he's told that he's positive. So now he has to go home. He might end up in the hospital. He might end up being put on a ventilator, which very often kills people, or being given remdesivir, which I've heard that nurses jokingly say.
It looks like your time is up, so if you can wrap up with your last statement.
Run death is near, call it run death is near because it kills so many people. So I think, again, this is highly irresponsible to not talk about these, these side effects. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Julia Bono. If you have three minutes, please state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, my name is Julia Bono and I have a background in degrees in scientific research. First of all, in this worrying time of dramatically increasing Omicron variant COVID cases, I wish to correct misinformation previously given to the board today by Dr. Pace and clarify that a September 2021 study by UC Davis researchers showed that the vaccinated who get Delta variant COVID are just as infectious as the unvaccinated who get it. Secondly, with respect to effectiveness, Newsweek reported today that over one-third of Americans vaccinated against COVID-19 now say they became affected with the virus after being fully inoculated. That includes a number of personal friends of mine who were vaccinated and reported that they subsequently got affected. Also, an Israeli study published last September showed natural immunity was 13 times better in preventing Delta variant COVID than double Pfizer vaccination. Furthermore, a June 2021 study showed that consuming a healthy plant-based diet was five times more effective in preventing moderate to severe COVID than diets heavy in animal products, which shows nutritional prevention measures can be more effective than vaccination. Finally, and they're much safer also. Finally, I want to highlight the many news reports of batches of contaminated COVID-19 injections to address the poor safety record of using experimental COVID vaccines in the general population outside of a properly monitored, fully informed and properly compensated clinical trial with a control group. First of all, in the United States, California warned against using batches of Moderna COVID-19 vaccines after allergic reactions were seen in January 2021. This was reported in the LA Times. Secondly, the Wall Street Journal reported in April 2021 that poor quality Johnson &amp; Johnson batch ingredients were investigated. Let's see, CNBC reported in June 2021 regarding the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines that an FDA inspection of the plant also turned up a long list of sanitary problems and bad manufacturing practices. The New York Times reported in March 2021 that when contract manufacturer Emergent Biosolutions contaminated at least 15 million doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson's COVID-19 vaccination and millions more doses of AstraZeneca's vaccine as this Baltimore facility earlier this year, the company had been collecting monthly payments of $27 million from the US government, payments that were intended to help Emergent avoid such a manufacturing disaster. Federal regulators have told Johnson &amp; Johnson that about 60 million doses of coronavirus vaccine produced at a troubled Baltimore factory cannot be used because of possible contamination. The Food and Drug Administration plans to allow 10 million doses to be distributed in the United States or sent to other countries, but with a warning that regulators cannot guarantee that Emergent Biosolutions, the company that operates the plant, followed good manufacturing practices. In Japan, Moderna vaccine batches have contamination issues with metal fragments. They also found black particles in Moderna vaccine. In Vietnam, several Vietnamese students died after getting the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine in December 2021. 120 Vietnamese children were reported admitted to hospital after the COVID-19 vaccines and they suspended using the Pfizer vaccine bat in December 2021. In the UK, there's been, in Italy, there's been a whole series of reports of the AstraZeneca vaccines.
If you can finish your statement, we would greatly appreciate it.
And various batches having problems. So I wanted to highlight that, you know, to wrap up and say that there are definitely safety issues with respect to using experimental medical procedures on a vast portion of our population.
Thank you.
And that this is something that is unconscionable, should be considered a crime against humanity.
Elaine Zacher, I hope I pronounced your name accurately, Zacher or Azaker? Please, please correct me by stating your name for the record. You have three minutes. Elaine, are you there? So what we'll do is move on to phone 2689 and come back to Elaine if she can get on board after that. Phone 2689, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes and go ahead.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. Christina Robertson, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, delayed treatment has been devastating. Yes, delayed treatment has been devastating for some, yet early treatment is suppressed. Scientific debate is suppressed. We're experiencing all kinds of censorship here while the government now is calling mandates and such. I do want to talk about some injuries. Maddie DeGray, D, that's Maddie, D E, space, G A R A Y, a 14-year-old who participated in the Pfizer trial and suffered severe neurological injuries, including seizures and permanent paralysis. However, Pfizer reported only that Maddie suffered a stomach ache. The Pfizer vaccine only gained emergency authorization for use in children because Pfizer manipulated trial data and committed serious offenses like hiding Maddie DeGray's injury. I'm reading directly from the book, The Real Anthony Fauci by Robert Kennedy. Now, look, this is an attorney who can lose his career if he. Very thoroughly documented, meticulous documentation in this book, and I challenge anyone to read it, and I also, he actually challenges anyone to prove him wrong. He is an attorney who wins big, big cases. So I want to go ahead and read something else of this book. According to an article on current trends in cardiology, within eight weeks of the public offering of COVID-19 products to the 12- to 15-year-old age group, was down 19 times the expected number of myocarditis cases in the vaccination volunteers over background myocarditis rates for this age group. That's pretty alarming, and I do need to go back to Maddie DeGray. Please remember that name. She's in a wheelchair for life. Jacob Clint Smith, 13-year-old, died. Kyle Warner, 29-year-old, professional biking athlete, life-altering myocarditis. You know, they say within five years, there's a 50% chance of not being on the planet anymore. We have to look at this, follow the money, and ask questions, and quit being hypnotized. Hospitals are now still paid $13,000 for a COVID-19 diagnosis, $39,000 for a ventilator. Why are ventilators even in the picture anymore? They should be rarely used. Webster now defines an anti-vaxxer as a person who is opposed to use of vaccines, or, get this, regulations mandating vaccines. You now cannot even oppose regulations mandating vaccines without being called an anti-vaxxer. One of those terms, one of those terms designed to make people dismiss information.
If you can wrap up the comments so that we can move forward.
Yes, vaccinating children is unethical. How can anybody consider it ethical to put a child at risk for the pretext that it might shield an adult? Children are not at risk of harm from COVID-19.
Thank you for that.
I'm hoping I have one more. Do I have one more second to say one more last sentence?
You've had over three minutes, and it's not fair to the others that probably want to speak. But I'll let you because I don't want you to feel like you're being censored. Is she there? No, okay. Elaine Zacher, you are next. If you, if we can hear you first. Oh, she was?
Yes.
Oh, no, there she is. We can hear you.
This is Elaine Zacher. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. I can hear you. Yes.
Okay. I have a question, a couple of questions for Dr. Pace. When someone comes to the emergency room or is admitted to the hospital with symptoms that that person has never had before, is that person asked whether he or she has recently received a COVID shot? If the answer is yes, is this reported to the CDC VAERS system? Thank you.
Dr. Pace, if you have an answer for that?
Well, I can't speak to what's happening in the two local hospitals, but I know as a clinician that when somebody shows up with some symptoms, one of the questions would be, are you vaccinated? And if so, when did you get it? So that would be part of the differential in terms of working through somebody's, you know, trying to figure out the diagnosis. And then if, you know, if it's an unusual symptom that seems like where you've, where you've come to is that it's caused by the vaccine, or that it's likely, that it's associated with the vaccine, then yeah, that typically would be reported to the VAERS system.
Okay, thank you. Doesn't look like we have any further public comments, so I'll bring it back to the board for any final comments. Or, Dr. Pace, if you had anything else to add or wanted to speak more on anything, then C.A.O. Hutchinson, go ahead.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add a clarifying point to some of the earlier discussion when the supervisors were talking about having conversations in your district with pharmacies about offering more capacity. And one area that I think you could be very helpful to the public health team would be if you contacted the pharmacies in your district and encouraged them to add full scope to the vaccine offerings that they're giving so that all persons can be vaccinated there. Some of the sites just offer vaccine to persons 18 and over. So if your board would be willing to take that on, I think that could be a great help.
Thank you. Thank you.
And if you'd like, I can make sure the team provides you with that data for your districts. Eileen, would that be possible? So you know what they offer when you make the contact.
All right.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just a couple of thoughts. One is, I heard what Supervisor Simon was saying about the businesses, and I, you know, we do have quite a supply of these boxes of 40 Binax Now antigen tests. And so some of the businesses are interested in getting some of these in order to test their employees and help keep their workplace safe. I think we can probably provide that to some of the businesses. So if that's of interest to some of the businesses and the community, they should contact us through the COVID warm line, and we'll see what we can do with that. I think the other thing is, is, you know, this is obviously a very stressful time for the community and for people all around the country, and I just appreciate this forum and having people be able to voice different viewpoints and kind of try to get information out there. It's, you know, it's always concerning if, if some of this controversy ends up keeping people from getting care that may, may eventually be life-saving. So we just really, but I think it's a great opportunity to talk about this and get the information out. So just want to say thank you for letting me talk today.
Of course. Thank you again, Dr. Pace and C.A.O. Hutchinson. You have your hand up again.
Just to add, just to add to that, the warm line that Dr. Pace just referenced, the telephone number a local business can call to request a box of test kits is 707-2638174.
Thank you for that. And I'll just address a couple of things real briefly. You know, when it comes to censorship, each week we talk about the things in this chamber, and we give three minutes for public input. We know it's very difficult at times for people to come up, and we understand in person if you're having a tough time, we'll give you some extra time. And often with the folks that have been overlapping, we give you that extra time. A lot of you repeat, you bring things forward repetitively. So if, that's fine. We need to hear that, and that's what this is here for. So we're not trying to censor anybody. You have your right to say what you need. You can also write in. That might help, too, so that you get more. Mr. Slate was one of them who sent in a letter to us and the book that was referenced many times during these statements. So I appreciate that. And so we do listen to who we have to, and being a part of this, you have, you're three minutes, and it's not fair to other people that need to have their three minutes to wait while others push forward. I'd like to also address a lot of statements that were made when it comes to fear mongering and things of that nature. If people don't believe in this, that's fine. They can have their opinion. But there are people on different areas. We have first responders in our county that are by themselves. They don't have a lot of help. What happens when they get sick? Even if, believe it or not, this, this happens. Some of you folks are doctors. Some of you folks claim to have all of these different backgrounds. Volunteer to help if you're not afraid of it. Let's work together instead of trying to find ways to split us apart. You spend a lot of energy researching, and I appreciate that. You should always do that. But if you can, volunteer and help if you're not afraid of it. And you don't want to wear a mask? Come help these folks that need help with this thing, and vice versa. Reach out to the other side with the people that don't believe in it, if you are a person that believes in this vaccination. Let's work together to get things moving rather than constantly sitting here bickering while people keep getting sick and we're not addressing the problem. I just had to say that. Supervisor Sabate, you had your pen up. If you have anything to state, please.
I just, there's a number that gets thrown around, and I don't even know where that number comes from, but this idea of 99.7, it just seems to be like a commonly used number. We have to at least acknowledge a foundation of data, and there is no foundation of data where 99.7 exists. It has been a fluctuating number when we were in the heat of the moment of COVID, when we had a large amount of cases and a large number of deaths in the, earlier in October, November, I think, was when we hit our huge surge. We were almost at 4% death rate. On average, since the very beginning, we're at about 1.5, and the state, it's about 1.6, and in the U.S., it's about 1.5, 1.4. We can't just use random numbers. We can disagree on the actions we take based on the data, but at one point, we have to agree what the data is, or else we're not, we're not talking to each other, we're not having a dialogue, we're just throwing stuff at each other. And I think that we have to come, from time to time, we receive information, the CDC says this. Well, if you can't believe what the numbers are on the CDC, then don't provide another portion of it that you do agree with. We have to at least find a basis of where the data is and what the data is. The data is that point one death rate is the flu, and we're experiencing anywhere at one point up to 4% recently, and on average for the duration of it, 1.5. That is an extreme difference versus point one, the flu. And so nobody here on this board has ordered or has spoken of support of mandates. And so I don't know why we're being talked to about the Nuremberg Code. We are seeing a data that says that our hospitals, our local hospitals, are seeing a higher level of severity in deaths with those that are unvaccinated, hence why we recommend people getting vaccinated. And there's a lot of very harsh language and inconsistent language, and it's easy to cherry pick. I could cherry pick names in our community of people that have died because of the virus, too. We need to look at the aggregate data and be able to make the best decisions. Please be respectful of the people around you, no matter how they feel about this pandemic and how they feel about the decisions being made about it. If you walk in someone's house and they ask you to take your shoes off, you take your shoes off. If you happen to walk into a store that is absolutely going to make sure 100% of their customers wear a mask, either you don't walk in or you respect what they're asking you to do. If you see somebody without a mask, let the authority in that area deal with that. Let's not become confrontational because we see things that we disagree with. It's become such a confrontational issue, we have to back up. We're losing, we're losing sense of community because of this issue, and we're forgetting that, yes, there's maybe 20,000 people that if, if they was 100% sure that they died because of the vaccine, there's 900,000 people that died from the virus. And those have been proven. And so it's, it's, we have this very circular motion of rhetoric that we keep hearing, and nothing is coming from this board of half the comments that are being thrown at us. Nobody here has mandated anything. We are trying to protect our community the best that we can so we can get past this. We're trying to inform you the best that we can with the information that we have, informing ourselves as well, and doing the best that we can to do what we need to do based on the current status. Has everything been perfect since day one? I'm going to say no. I think that it's been a learning curve. I think we probably went full bore right at the beginning, and then now we're very, very tired of everything that we've had to deal with over the course of the last two years. But there's just some comments that keep coming back. 99.7 is one of those that rings in my head. Where does that even come from? I have no idea. And also, just a quick comment, if Jeremy Rarick is still there, please email me with where you found that from the CDC, because I just looked it up and I could not find it. Granted, that doesn't mean that it's not there, but send it to me, please. I'm interested in reading about it, so please.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close that item on the agenda. Thank you, everybody, for the presentations. Thank you, everyone, for the comments that gave in the public input, and thank you, staff and fellow supervisors for your input as well. We'll go ahead and entertain a short break, a five-minute break, before we move on to our 6.4. If that's okay. I know we're behind a little bit, but I can, I think we could use a break, so we'll be back at 10:50.
Just a little bit behind.